Wednesday, November 7th, 2018, meeting of the Cushinget Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped. We do have a form. Our first item of business is the secretary's report, the meeting minutes from September 19th, 2018. Does anyone have any comments, questions, clarifications, corrections? Okay. Any motions?
I'm opposed to accept secretary's report.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I am.
Thank you. Next item of business, the financial report that Dana has provided to us.
So, we are now halfway through the second quarter, almost, which is hard to believe. And we're at 36.5% spent out in total. I think everything is exactly where it needs to be. The fact that we're just at 50% spent out for material is good, and that's due in part to the revolving fund, because we're half-spent out of the revolving fund as well, which I'll talk about in a minute. But I have no concerns with where we stand right now. There's no major expenses coming up or anything that I anticipate is going to cause any drastic changes in the next month or so with us. So unless anyone has any questions for me about it.
Can you talk for a moment about the tech support line?
Sure. I think we had talked about that before. It was initially, sales had budgeted $13.96, which is what we submitted, but then with the addition of the laptops and the support fees, it took the final bill to $16.80.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And that won't change again. That will stay exactly the same for the rest of this fiscal year, as well as the sales lines. We won't see anything else get spent out for those two ones.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Dana about anything? Any motion, please?
Motion.
Or three motions.
Motion to accept the library report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. I just wanted to comment quickly about the revolving fund while we're still just in the budget category. As you know, we can spend up to $6,000 for the revolving fund for fiscal year. As of today, we've spent $3,000, so we do have $3,000 left to spend between now and June. Our balance in the revolving fund as of today is $3,385.17. So for this fiscal year, we've deposited just over $2,000 into the revolving funds. And our year-to-date, when I did a comparison to last year at this time, we have deposited more this fiscal year than at the same time last fiscal year into the revolving fund, but we are starting to see a decrease in fine collection due to the automatic renewals, which went into effect in September, which is a great thing. So that's fine by me that we're seeing the decrease with fine collection. But we are seeing more printing and a pretty steady use of the fax machine, which also goes into the revolving fund, the printing fees and the fax fees. So I think that's why we're not seeing a decline in our deposits yet to the revolving fund, because we are, we do have a lot of printing going on. A lot of rather large print jobs as well, which is great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, next on the agenda, we'll talk about the building, concerns about that. I know we had talked in our last meeting a bit about the folks who are coming into the parking lot by the exit and vice versa, so we were going to talk a bit more about that as well. And also talk about the fence. We do have an estimate here to take a look at. So, has anyone had a chance to contact town hall to talk a little bit about signage?
Someone must have. Someone must have, because there's now a "do not enter" sign at the exit area. So, someone, no one on the board?
No.
Went to town hall?
Great.
Well, that's an interesting coincidence, because I haven't been able to figure out how that got there.
I thought there was a policeman sits right there. Do you think that would have happened?
I think they would have mentioned it to us. I think, but I don't know. I mean, there are still people, there is now clearly a "do not enter" sign right under the one-way sign, and people are still driving in that way, so I don't.
Maybe somebody watched our meeting.
Maybe, I don't know. So, I thought someone here was.
I'm going to get one over here. This is library entrance.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Parking lot entrance.
I drove, I was in Fairhaven today, and I drove past, I guess it was somebody's house/business, and they had a sign that said, "Enter here," with an arrow. And I thought, that says it all. That's really what we need right there. Enter here, rather than just entrance, but enter here. As opposed to over there. Now, I don't know if we could put up, you know, big red "wrong way" signs at the exit. I know that there are bylaws about signage in town, so I don't know how those apply here.
Yeah, well, when you're leaving then, make sure you take a look. It's right under the one-way sign.
It's attached to the same post.
Attached to the same post. It's directly underneath. It says, "Do not enter."
If we put "enter here," on both sides, both sides.
Exactly. So, yeah, so it would be like this.
By which way you come down.
As opposed to facing the street, which doesn't help. All right. Would anyone like to take a look at the bylaws in town? To look at the signage aspect of that? I'm sure you can get a copy at the clerk's office.
I think you can just tell Dan. He would tell you right away what you can do.
I don't know. I think they're pretty explicit in the bylaws. You should probably have a copy here, right, at the library. That makes sense. All right, so maybe at our next meeting, you can let us know what the options are. It might be worthwhile to talk to, I don't know, maybe to talk to Dan, Dan Minar, to the DPW, and see what kind of signs they have if we had to order something, perhaps.
And when we got the one-way signs, they were the ones who gave us the one-way signs and put them in. And I figured one of these.
Yeah, he probably doesn't have those. "Enter here."
Oh, probably not, but we would need to find out if we can even use that language. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, to see what the bylaws say, if we could, you know, have a sign that says, "Enter here," right, with an arrow. That would be great.
You'd do a catwalk sign that says, "Enter here."
Well, we don't know. I don't know.
Seems a little strange.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Now, the company that made the library sign, I don't know if they.
It was one individual who made that sign.
Okay. So we couldn't necessarily go back to him for an "enter here" sign, if that's what we decided we want?
Well, I don't think that's the kind of sign that you'd want one of them, would you?
Not like that, but if there's a company that makes signs.
Yeah, that sign, in April of 2016, we discovered there was a crack in that sign. And it's now, no, he hasn't repaired it until November of 2018, and he hasn't repaired it.
Well, I thought he was, I thought he said he was coming back to do it.
Yeah, so we'd like.
Oh, hey, we should call him. Make sure. At least he said he would do it.
He did. We can talk about that off camera.
Yeah.
Well, I can take a look and see what I can find for companies that make signs at our next meeting. Jerry, we'll have some information, maybe about the bylaws, what we can and can't do. Maybe there'll be a company where we can possibly order a sign. Does anyone want to talk to Dan Minar about what the possibilities are?
I can talk to him.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Great. I don't necessarily want something to show up.
No, no, no.
But it would be nice to see, you know, what they have, what anybody can add. I wonder what they do anywhere else in town.
I don't think they have seen it anywhere else in town.
I haven't seen it.
School, yeah. There's not, yeah, the school doesn't have it. The school's not.
But they don't have one-way drive-throughs.
But they can, Ford, that is, that is a cul-de-sac. Not cul-de-sac.
Yeah, the school too, when you drive in, don't you have to go around on the side?
Yeah, and I think there's a sign that says "one-way," but that's our way, I think. But at Ford, there isn't anything. Because Ford, you could technically, people do exit out of the entrance at Ford, because if they've driven straight down into the building office area, when they're leaving the building office area, they can come straight out. But that exit, leaving Ford, if you've gone through the bus lane and you've come around to exit, there isn't anything that says you can't enter there. People could enter there for, you know, I'm not sure, but there isn't any signage there.
We'll all be looking now.
Sure. We will. But the "do not enter" sign that was put out here, it's, I don't know if, I mean, I'm assuming it's the DPW that put it there, so maybe Dan could also answer as to if it could be lowered a little, because it's so high up that it's not at a driver's line of sight. So maybe if even if it were on the same post but lowered, then a driver might see it. I mean, when we catch people doing it, or not catch, but when we've seen that people are doing it, and we point it out to them, they often say, "Oh, I'm sorry. I just didn't realize." And I just, you know, and everything's very apologetic, but it's.
Yeah, it is too high.
But where it is now, it would be, it'd be very hard to see it if you weren't looking for it. You wouldn't necessarily notice it were there. But maybe it's required to go to start.
Yeah, the rules are about the eye level or whatever, bylaws.
So.
Any other discussion about the signs? Diane has provided us with an estimate for signage on the sides. Diane, anything you want to add to this?
Okay, I did approach Jim, Jim.
Merritt.
Merritt. Yeah, I was going to say, and I talked to him. He said he would get the estimate for the fence. And, you know, we, whatever that, they would put it up in the spring. So, for installation, that was, but. He said that he was going to get to Dana. That's, that's as far as I got, is the estimate. It's a split, it's a wooden split rail fence.
Okay. So this came from Jim?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, because I asked him about rolls or home deal now, and he said they do have their accounts there, but this is what he came up with. I don't know if he had called to find out the prices, but this is probably the best price that he could get.
This is a great price, yeah. So for both sides.
Yep, he, because I asked him if he wanted me to measure, some measurements, and I, "No, I'll do it." He said, "Okay."
Okay, terrific.
He did everything.
And it's plain wood, not white, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's wood. It's, I, no, it's not the white one.
Right, not white.
Yeah, the white one was going to be too expensive, the white.
I think wood is fine. I think that would look better here, probably.
The question I had was, it does say "split." And a split for real fancy, this looks real nice. You know, if you, you know, it's a rail and it is split. Not the round dowel that goes in that way.
I don't know if there's anything about painting it or.
No, they just, they just let it go. Usually cedar or some tormentwood or something.
And it weathers, so gray.
Mm-hmm. But we should find out if it is, it would look, it would look better as a split rail than a dowel.
It does say "split rail."
It does, yes.
Yeah. And he did say the DPW could install it in the spring.
In the spring.
Okay. This, this looks good, but does everybody think?
I think if that's a good price, then you get a split rail fence, but, because I don't want to put it in, that's why it's.
Don't leave it, would be hot.
I definitely think, leave it natural. Don't paint it, because that's too much maintenance.
Well, you wouldn't paint it. You wouldn't paint it. No, because it would peel.
Right, that's too many, too much maintenance. Just let it go. Put it on and forget about it.
Dana?
Sure.
All right. It was easy. All right. I guess as we probably want to have a motion for this, since it does involve an expenditure. So, we would need to.
That would be through the, the.
Yes, yes. And we have already released funds for that.
Yes, yeah, so that, you know, to re-release.
This would be to move forward with the plan and to have the DPW installed in the spring.
Can I just, did he say DPW, or did he say his office would install in the spring? His group? Okay. I'm sure we can figure that out, but.
Okay, I, I don't know. I know he said that they would install it.
Okay. Great.
All right, if someone would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to authorize purchasing the fence for $2,525.96. And to have the, have someone in the town, somebody in the town, install it in the spring.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, so. I don't know if Dana's better coming from you.
I can be there for them.
Or for Diane to.
I don't mind getting in touch with them unless you want to.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay, good. All right, great. Thanks for it.
Thank you. Yeah, this is terrific. Yeah, that's wonderful. Next item on the agenda is the action plan for fiscal year 2020. I know. So Dana provided that to everyone. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to take a look at that. There were five goals. The action plan is part of our long-range plan.
I'm hoping, unless you want me to, not to go through it line by line, because it is so similar to the FY19 action plan that we reviewed at the last meeting, so I prefer not to go through it line by line. Unless you've noticed something, that you have questions or concerns or comments about. Again, it's just to have on file with the state. They're not checking up on this. It's a good guide for staff to have and for the trustees to have to refer to, and see what our goals and our, how we're going to achieve them throughout the fiscal year, but.
And all the work that goes on behind the scenes, too. I did have a couple of questions. I made a few notes. For the first goal, attendance at adult programs will increase by 5% annually. Add one new adult program per quarter. Is that like a different format or an additional program?
An additional program per quarter.
So, every, every year, action plan, and we're going to have lots and lots of programs.
Right, but, and I don't anticipate we'll do it every year. You know, we did do it this past year. But it also, it doesn't mean that it's a standing program either. It could be that, okay, so this quarter, we're going to bring in an author visit this quarter. Next quarter, maybe we're going to introduce a monthly or a, yeah, like a monthly for the quarter film series, which is proposed, to do something like that. It doesn't mean that they're standing programs, so it doesn't mean that at the end of the year, we're going to have, you know, 16 programs going on a month. It's just a, one additional, in addition to the standing programs, which are the readers group, the knitters group.
Cookbook.
Cookbook book club. So in addition to the, those are, we're considering the standing programs and anything else as something extra, so then, in other words, we're not just doing the readers group, the cookbook book club, and the knitters group, and then not adding anything else. So it doesn't mean that it's permanent programming. Yeah, otherwise that would be really, there'd be nothing going on.
And for goal three, I was wondering if, I don't know, for this plan or perhaps for the fiscal year '21 plan, I was wondering if we would want to consider increasing the education line a little bit in the budget. I don't know if that's something that might help meet some of these objectives, because goal three does speak to some staff, education, workshops, professional development. I don't know if what we have in the budget now, which I think is $500, you know, if increasing that might help us meet these goals a little better, if you think that's something to consider, whether it's for this one or for the next one, or if it's not even necessary. I know that there are sales workshops and things, others that may have just a minimal cost associated, if any.
If you, if you want to add it in for '21, you could add it in. I don't know that it even needs to go in the plan, but it could certainly go in if you want to add it in.
Just wanted to toss that out as something to maybe think of.
Okay, okay.
Not necessarily to do action on, but.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any, anything regarding the plan? Well, it's extremely comprehensive. Yet again, nice job, Dana. Definitely ambitious.
Well, it helps that no one's actually, like, it's not like if we do this, submit this, and we don't achieve all of these things within that year, that something negative will happen. It just means we'll add it to the next year if we don't get to do it this year. So, it's a good guide for everybody, I think, especially with the creation of the new children's room assistant position. It will be helpful.
I did notice that position was in here a lot, which is great.
Yeah, but surely it'll need to be moved apart.
You're not going to be able to dress up in pajamas anymore?
I, we'll see. We'll see what'll come through next.
All right, if there's no other discussion, do you want us to make a motion to approve this?
I think you have to, because, yes, I have to send it off by December 1st, so.
All right.
I'm looking at the, the fiscal year '28 action plan. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, announcements related to library programs or services. And I did want to make one comment, which relates to library services, which was included in your director's report, Dana, about Wareham Library being recertified. Okay, you'll be speaking about.
Yeah, it says November 1st. After a very long process, the Wareham Free Library has been recertified by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, which is great news, because that means that Wareham patrons are now able to use other libraries outside Wareham, and we're also able to fill Wareham holes with our items. So, it's a win-win for everybody that they have been recertified, which is great news. If you have a chance to go over and visit them, congratulate them. It's been a long process for the staff and for their trustees and their friends groups. This has been ongoing for a number of years. And that's what happens once you, why state certification is so, so important. And while we need the support of our towns and our finance committee and our trustees, because when you lose state certification, it's very hard to get it back. It's, you know, it's quite a process. But they've got it, and that's great news. And currently, all Massachusetts public libraries have been certified by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, which is great also. It's the first time in a long time, which I think really speaks to people using their libraries and the importance of public libraries to residents of our state, and, which is great news, of course.
It's wonderful. I'm really glad to hear that. It has been a long time.
A long time. That's great news. Onward and upward. We filled our first Wareham holds today, I think, and we received items from Wareham for the first time today to fill our patrons' holes. So, it's great news, yeah.
They have a very nice library.
They do. It is. See, I just went there for a meeting. I hadn't been in a long time, and I was there for a meeting and was very impressed. I didn't realize it was as large as it is, and it's a nice space. And it was remodeled a long time ago, but they, it's really stood up, I think, to the time period, and still looks in great shape. Good, so, yeah, thank you for bringing it up. So, yes, that's good news. A couple of other things from my director's report that I just wanted to mention is that, well, we got our certification, we know, from the state, which is always good. Even when you do the reports and you know that you've done everything that you're supposed to do, it's still nice to get the notification that, yes, you got it. So we'll be receiving our board letter, I think, anytime now, which is great news. I'll have to think about that again next year. And as I mentioned before, the sales network implemented the automatic renewals as of September 2nd. And due to that, we are seeing, or due in part to that, we're seeing an increase once again in our circulation. And I gave you the circulation report. I have September on one side, not February on the backside.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah, so our circulation increased from 4,828 in September of 2017 to over 7,000 in September of 2018. It's a 40%, 47% increase in overall circulation. According to the strategic plan, we're supposed to get a 3% increase in overall circulation each fiscal year, so done. Thanks, automatic renewals. And for October, we have 5,123 in October of 2017, which was a huge number for us in October of 2017. But we're almost at 8,000 in October of 2018 in circs, and we've, we've never been that high ever. So, not even in the summer. So, this is, like, really another win-win. I mean, automatic renewals are great for patrons, because if you've got an item and you get to keep it another two weeks without having to do anything, great. And then if after that, you get to keep it another two weeks without having to do anything, fantastic. And you don't owe any money, and everyone's happy. And then it's wonderful for our circulation. So, but, you know, I know we wouldn't be this high without the automatic renewals, but it's certainly, our circulation has increased otherwise. So, because you can see that reflected in audiobook increases and. That's, also, you can't, I don't do the year-to-year comparison for hoopla, but our hoopla loans have more than doubled over the past year. So that's something that, a service that's being used more and more by our patrons all the time. Our non-resident circulation continues to go up every month, and we'll see an increase in that with the automatic renewals also. So, it's all good in terms of statistics. Our quarter attendance is up as well. I love when we do just about the same amount of programs, but the attendance is up. We know over that. That's always nice to see, because we know that, you know, people are really looking to the library for things to do, and we're really happy about that. So that's that. And then the other big thing was that, you know, as you know, our library employees reached an agreement with the town for their union contract, so that's been finalized, and we were able to promote Bethany Veer to the children's room assistant, which is fantastic. And as soon as she's reached her mandatory probation period with stuff up, then we will be able to fill her prior position, and hopefully by the end of December, we will be at a full staff of 10, which.
Whoever's.
I mean, it's amazing what happens. So, it has, but it's, now that it's, everything's, the ball's in motion and everything's going, it feels really good to getting that all accomplished. it feels really good to getting that all accomplished. Yes?
I'm just blown away with the peak encounter.
Yeah.
That's almost 3,000 people.
Yes.
Have come into this building.
And that's just the front door.
I was.
Because we haven't gotten one on the side door yet, nothing happens there yet, except. So, so once we get that going, that'll be even more. So, it's certainly not an accurate number, but it's at least a little something. And it's higher than it was in, you know, from between September and October, and it's higher than it was in October of last year.
That's just wonderful.
Yeah.
Me too.
That's. We did have nearly 100 people here for the not-so-spoooky pajama storytime, so you know. So, when that kind of thing happens, when you're, on one night, when you're getting 100 people just for one program, you know, that's, obviously, that's not happening every day, but.
No.
But it, it all adds up. So, yeah, a lot of good things happening here, for sure. And speaking of that, speaking of good things, we do have a workshop happening November 13th. It's a wet felting workshop, which is a really neat craft. We have a fiber artist who will be in to do that. The Friends are sponsoring it and providing material for that. So, we really appreciate the Friends supporting this program. And because of the kind of project it is, space is very limited. We do have a waitlist going, so if someone is interested in signing up for the program, you can at least get on the waitlist. We're hoping that the Friends will sponsor a similar program next year, when we're in a new calendar year, and we can call the people on the waitlist first to offer them the spot before we open it up to the public.
Who did you call?
It's wet felting. Wet felting, so it's felt and water and stuff. So, I'm really excited just to see how this goes, yeah. Well, I'll be here for the Friends meeting that night, so I'll be popping in. And hopefully, the Friends will be able to pop in also and see what they're, you know, what they're sponsoring. And I think it's important for the Friends to know that, too.
What's the attendance cap for that?
It's 10 is the attendance cap, because of the kind of, because of the needing some one-on-one attention and because of the cost of the supplies, so we decided to try it at 10. So, we, we do have 10 people signed up, and we are on the waitlist already, sending people up for that. So, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. Yeah, but I'm excited for it. Our patrons seem to respond really well to our programs for adults, so we'd like to do that as much as we, as we can.
That's great, and that's a different sort of a program, which is nice.
It is, yeah. So, hopefully, it's the first of many similar programs. And as always, we've got family storytime on the calendar, Lego Club, our very popular take-apart workshop, where we have kids coming in and taking apart all kinds of devices. We are soon gonna have them start putting things back together now, so that should be interesting. We do have chess club on the calendar as well. We've been trying to launch a chess club for quite a while. Sandra works diligently on that and deserves a lot of credit for the effort she's put into it. And hopefully, we can get a chess club launched soon. So, the only other thing is that the library is closed Monday, November 12th, for Veterans Day, and then both Wednesday and Thursday, November 21st and 22nd, for the Thanksgiving holiday. So, everyone should be aware of that. As always, acupl.org has our programs.
Thank you for my comments about that.
Thanks.
Diane, you did a good job.
Thank you.
One of your staff helped me to make this.
They are pretty wonderful.
They are. We're in a good place.
I was in the library last week, I was in stacks, and I could hear somebody at the front desk talking to the staff and saying, "What a great library it is, and I really like coming here. It's so, so wonderful, so welcome."
So nice to hear that, I think it really makes everyone, I mean, I take pride in hearing it, you know, as the director, but I think it makes everyone who works here feel very proud also, that we, you know, are often being told that. You know, people are often being thanked for, we do go above and beyond on the desk and trying to find items that if we don't have it, you know, we try to locate items somewhere else or get information from somewhere else. And, and I think they, they do more than their best every day, and I love when they're recognized for doing that. It's not easy to necessarily be on the front lines at a counter, you know, dealing with the public. I mean, our public is really good, but I think that it also helps that our staff is so outstanding and lucky to have them.
Patrons recognize it and appreciate it, too.
They do.
Which is great. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do not have any other business on the agenda. Okay, that's at our next meeting. Do you have any suggestions?
Well, I was hoping that we'd be able to meet before the end of the year, only because I do, I knew I wasn't gonna have time to get that together for this meeting, but we do need to discuss our community room policy, and I would love that to be finalized before the end of this year. So, I'm hoping Wednesdays seem to work okay for the most part for people I'm gathering. So, my first option was Wednesday, December 12th, at 4:30, if that's a possibility. And if not, my second option was Wednesday, November 28th, at 4:30. Which is just around the corner now, which is like narrowly impossible to do three weeks from now. Wednesday, December 12th is my option one. My option two is November 28th. My option three is this time.
28th is a Friday.
Oh, sorry, 26th, oh, and that is the 6th, sorry.
November 28th.
Yeah, Wednesday, November 28th.
Thank you.
Oh.
Wednesday, November 28th.
I did the same thing. Yeah, I was like, wait a minute.
Sorry, Wednesday, November 28th is option two.
Wednesday, December 12th is okay for me.
It's okay for me.
Yep.
I can make that work.
Okay.
December 12th, it is.
Awesome.
Diane, is that okay for you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, our next meeting will be Wednesday, December 12th, at 4:30 PM, here in the library's community room. Okay, we have no other business, so we need a motion to adjourn, please. Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you. All right, this Wednesday, November 7th, 2018, meeting of the Cushing Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned at 5:05 PM. Thank you, everyone.